Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, I've started the live stream.
Good evening. Good. Good afternoon, everyone. It is four o'clock time to begin our afternoon strategic planning meeting. It's just time to call ourselves F O R. And the first item we have on the afternoon meeting is police headquarters update with senior center.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. This is Brian Born, Assistant City Manager. I've asked Stewart Cooper New Architects to join us this afternoon to give you a little update and look at the final plans for the police headquarters and the senior center renovation at the E J building. We have a few people from the office with us, Jim Stewart, Shane Cates, and I think I see Gloria. Is that Gloria, Jim? But they have a few slides to show you and they will go through the presentation. So Jim, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, Bruce, you've got the slides. Okay. This is a note. Well, first of all, I appreciate the opportunity to be here. I've zoomed so much in the last few months. It's just amazing what you can do online now. We it seems like our conference room is full of this every day of some sort. So thank you so much to for the opportunity to come and talk with you. This is an overall site plan of the property and this is the area where the police department's located. This is the existing parking, which will remain. But this is the area where the Sally porch located, a wash building and generators, garbage pickup on the side here. And this is the main entrance set back from the road and from the side here. The front entrance, and we'll show you the elevations shortly. Main in the main entrance to the station. You can see from Charlotte Avenue and then up Crowell Street, you can see the sides. And then this is the north elevation on this side. This is to the rear. And we've planned it for the capability of having a future expansion at some point in time. Now, this is the area out front, which has public parking, nice landscape areas, plenty of parking for folks who are coming to the downtown area or coming to the senior center. This is the old newspaper building with the senior center in now, a large area which the city will more than likely, from the long range plan, will develop some outdoor activities for the senior center. And this is the parking area for the senior center on this side. And the main entrance is right here on the corner of the building. And this entrance is to the side where the entrance. I guess you'd say the activity hall is, and we'll point that out on the floor plan. And there was a little parking lot over on this side, and we've developed that and fixed that up so that would give additional parking to the senior center as well. So we've tried to pick up a lot of that area. This area is an existing parking lot, which we're not doing much to. We've just got some landscaping and fencing, and this is a gate and a driveway to the backside of the police department. So next slide. This is the next slide showing the a large blow up of the area showing how we're developing it, landscaping. We have a fair amount of landscaping on the project. This is the gate, security gate on the backside entrance and exit for the police department. And this is just more of the areas where the staff can park and patrol officers. This area, if we can kind of move the slide up a little bit, I'm not.
Let me interject something here. And this might be a Bruce question, but I'm having a hard time following along with this conversation. I don't see the cursor too well. Is there any way we could expand the video of this plot so we could more easily understand what this gentleman is talking about?
Can you see this cursor? It's white, moving around in one spot in the below the.
No.
Okay, you can't see that one. Okay.
It is hard to see.
Okay.
Jim, I made you a co-host, so you should be able to make some annotations on the drawing or take and actually, I think you can actually take over, take over this, the share.
Well, that's gotten a little beyond me, okay? I'm not sure exactly how to do that.
Okay, I see that cursor in the top right hand corner a little bit now.
That's, that's me moving it, so.
That's the black one, but mine's the clear one with the just outline on it.
Yeah, well, that might make it harder to see if it's clear, but I don't want to throw a kink in this, but it's just seems small and not knowing where you're talking about in particular to the picture, it's a little hard for me to follow. That's all. I was trying to follow along in the conversation.
All right, can we get copies of that?
Yes, I'll be happy to provide hard copies. I could get those to bridge it and you could take a look at them and I'll be happy to answer any questions or get answers if I need to for you.
I'm not sure exactly how to change our person to make it dark so you can see it better, but this is the same.
Jim, can you, do you have the document on your system there where you can share it?
I don't. Air screen. Yes, and it's green.
So if you, well, if you'll go ahead and share, share your document, your screen. If you want to bring, bring it, bring the document up on your screen and share it, then they can see what, then you can, we can go that route.
Oh, okay, maybe. I'm, I'll try. Well, I'm just lost.
Which one you gonna pick?
Complicated desktop there, Jim.
Top is not used to this. Remember where you saved this.
Yeah, I'm sorry to throw the proverbial wrench in the fan there.
Oh, there it is. On copy of it, of the client. I'm gonna make you copies if I would like that.
Would you do that, please? Well, thank you so much.
Okay, we're trying something to see if we can edit it. I don't know why I want to display this on the screen. I don't either. We've got it up on our laptop, but we can't get it now for some reason. Maybe we go back to the original one. How to get this screen onto there? That's the meeting invite, the files that's just the meeting invite. Well, I guess we don't.
Well, Freddie Gordon here. Listen, I apologize for any inconvenience I may have caused. And if you just need to go back to the previous slide production, that'll be fine.
Yeah. If you share, let's see what happens.
We having some copies, they've done some copies for now. We'll have something to go by. If you want to, Freddie said, Councilman Gordon, we can't go back where we were.
There you go. I don't know what that. Well, okay, looks like we're back.
Well, I put it back. Get it back to the way we had it. Now, do you, are you, are you ready to show your screen there, Jim?
That's the same.
Okay, I got you.
Working on across the senior center. You know, there's just sitting there, there's somebody property over here.
Yeah. They cleaned in all.
This is. Goes down the hill. If you walk out there, that'll be a secure entrance. This will.
The first slide. I think we're. Dale two, the second slide. I'm sure there's running black. Now I have the same cursor on the screen. It's up in the right hand corner and it's.
Jim, are you, did you get your drawing? Are you ready to show it? Because I switched it back to me sharing my screen.
Right, okay.
So if you're ready, you can start. I'll stop sharing, you can start.
Click on that one, see what that. Oh, there you go. Let's do what Gloria suggested right here. That didn't work either. That made sense. It's not shared. Maybe give it back to Bruce. I think the whole area can transform when they. Okay, Bruce, you can bring it back up again. We can't seem to get it.
Okay.
Here properly.
We're good, which makes me.
Yeah.
Okay, well, let me just sort of explain. I can't point to it or anything, but the upper part of the slide, it shows the backside of the police department and also the landscaping and buffering around the backside and the area for future expansion and the parking lot for staff and tow cars and that sort of thing. All the down is a blow up of the senior center. If you come on down to that area outside that recreation area, then the senior center with. Let's go ahead to the next slide. This is blow up of the main parking area that's down in front of the senior center along Charlotte Avenue. As you can see, we've got trees and landscaping, grass areas. It's going to be really a nice addition to the downtown and across from the city hall area. Quite a nice area. Okay, let's go to the next slide. Maybe we'll have better luck. This is the senior center. This is the old E J building. If you notice, the reddish colored brick is the brick that's existing. And then the tan brick is the brick for the new addition and where we're doing other things to the building. That, that's the same brick that we're going to use on the police department to kind of tie both of the buildings together with some color and the landscaping. So you see a drop off area there at the top elevation. And I keep wanting to point at it, but I can't really do anything about it. But the, this is a column area right through here with a walkway that runs from the front entrance into the area where the activity area is a large meeting area. And this is another picture of the existing area. And this is also the canopy area, which goes down through there. And it has a car let off underneath right through, right through here. This is the new addition, which is this room at the top. And it has exits coming out of the shop area and the, the other areas that are activities there. We had to have exits out of that. We have a long walkway that comes all the way down. Lighting dock is still in place, and that's the backside of the shop where the woodwork working and everything takes place. This is a large overhead door that we put in, in place of the door that was there. And this has glass in it to let a lot of light come into that space. So it'll be quite nice in there with a lot of, lot of natural light coming in from that side. And they can take deliveries and things like that on that side. Okay, we go to the next slide. This is the police department. This is the view that you see from Charlotte Avenue, the main entrance with the lobby area on the first floor. This is the Sally port for bringing detainees in or if you need to enter and that sort of thing. This is the other, other elevation, which is the elevation on the, that's the Crowell Street side. You see there, offices and there's a meeting room on the first floor, training room on this area. This area is detectives and those officers up there. Then there's, there's a tactical training room up in this corner. This is mostly administrative area here and the whole upper section. And this is the same side where the detectives are, which is here. We go to the next slide. This is the other side of the building. This is the side where Sally port is. We have all of the equipment room for the tactical command group. Also, the offices up here for patrol and for patrols down in this area. We have a communications room up in this area, which is close to the product. This is the backside showing the Sally port and employee staff entrance on here and here. And over on this side, we have the generators, we have the garbage collection and that sort of thing. So that's, that's pretty much everything for the site. And we think it's going to be really a nice addition to the downtown. Yeah, we've all been waiting on the brown fields to be over with. Hopefully, that's done here shortly. Where we've engaged a company to give us the design for the vapor barrier that goes underneath the police department, because this site has to have that underneath the building to gravity ventilate anything that may, any kind of pollution that may come up out of the ground. And we've done those projects before. So this one is not as difficult as some that we have done, which were flammable gas paper testing and that sort of thing. So they, those were difficult. Not as bad. So, and that's a good thing. So anyway, that's basically the buildings, the design. And if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer those.
Sir, what, what is, fully break ground, what could be spoken?
If I can jump in, this is Brian Born. We are planning, once, once, like Jim said, we have contracted with geological resources for the, the VIM system, that's the vapor intrusion mitigation system. Once that is done, we plan to insert that into the architectural drawings and put the plans out to bid. I'm hoping that sometime in September, we can, we can get that done and inserted. Once we put the project out to bid, it will, they will have a month to submit bids. That will take us into October, November. And then hopefully, we bring that forward to council for approval in the December, January timeframe. And hopefully by spring of 21, we anticipate to be breaking ground on the site. If all goes as planned and the numbers come back good, which with the market right now, I'm hearing that we should get some good, good numbers back on the bids.
What's the anticipated time, actual time to take for building barring any, with bad weather and all?
It's probably 12 to 18 months, a typical construction time. Both projects, the, the senior center and the police department are going to be bid as one project. We hope that this is to give us some economies of scale. That's why you see similar materials used to join the two buildings, link them together. But also hopefully we can realize some cost savings and a better pricing on a larger project that contractors will be bidding.
Will, will, will we be using any women or minority contractors?
We, we have, we have that in our, in our bidding documents, so they will go out and there are language in the documents that contractors, you know, we, we need to do that.
Yes, that's in the specification.
Have we had any in the past, any minority or women social engineers or architects to do any of our projects in Monroe?
I, I, I'm not sure. I don't know. I know on the ones that I've been involved with, there have been minority contractors involved. Now, what's the makeup of the architectural office and actually who does it? All of those proposals, as you know, are based on qualification based. Then the fees are negotiated. So the selection process, but in the documents, those kinds of things are, are in there.
Okay.
Any other question? You're done. Thank you very much. Item two, resolution approved in interlocal agreement or Union County Board of Education remote learning with the city of Monroe.
And I think Mayor Tanya Edwards will kind of talk about this one.
Good, good afternoon, Mayor, Council. This item's pertaining to a request for approval of an interlocal agreement with the Union County Board of Education to allow the city to assist by providing remote learning sites for students attending schools located within the city. In March of this year, Union County Public Schools suspended onsite instruction due to COVID, the COVID-19 pandemic, which continued through the end of the 2019-20 school year. Under decree by the governor, schools across the state were tasked with developing a plan to reopen during the 2020-21 year that implement strict social distancing and other guidelines provided by the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. Anyone hear me?
Yes.
The Union County, the Union County Board of Education made the decision to reopen the schools in the county under Plan B, which provides for remote and virtual learning for students on some or all days during the school week. On July the 28th, the Parks and Recreation Staff met with Ty Harris Staubert, Union County Public Schools Assistant Superintendent of Communications and Community Relations, to discuss how our department might be able to provide assistance and support for our residents in regard to remote learning. The potential lack of internet access and supervised learning opportunities while parents worked were identified as challenges that our residents might face. In an effort to provide assistance in these areas, a partnership between our department and the Union County Public Schools was discussed that could provide remote learning sites or remote learning centers at each of our community centers. The Parks and Recreation Staff, along with Ms. Staubert and the Information Technology Departments of both the city of Monroe and the Union County Public Schools have worked to plan and implement a program of this nature over the past four weeks. Remote learning sites are being offered Monday through Friday from 7:30 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. and from 5:00 p.m. until 7:00 p.m. at each of our community centers. Parks and Recreation Center staff are facilitating this remote, these remote learning opportunities by providing Wi-Fi access in safe and supervised areas for completing daily virtual assignments. The Union County Public School System is assisting with registration, marketing to families in need, and by providing two Wi-Fi hotspots per location to assist with internet capacity. Both the city of Monroe Parks and Recreation Department and the Union County Public School System are grateful for the opportunity to work together in this endeavor to support our residents during this most trying time. Today, we're here to ask council to consider approving the attached resolution allowing the city to enter into the interlocal agreement with the Union County Board of Education for the provision of remote learning sites to serve our residents at the city of Monroe Parks and Recreation Community Centers and to authorize the city manager to execute any and all required documents.
Tony. Can you hear me, Tony?
I can.
I'm having a little bit of trouble totally understanding. What's, what's exactly going to cost us for this to happen?
There's no cost at all to us. All we've done, Lynn, is we're just providing at our community centers, space and our center supervisors who are already working there are going to be helping to facilitate this program so the city doesn't incur any cost. It's just a partnership where the school system's helping us to, again, provide some hotspots to expand our capacity and helping us to reach out to families with registration and identify families of need to help us market the program and work with us on this program.
Got you. I think it's a great program. I, I, I think it's good that we can come together and kind of come to resolution on what we can do to help, anything that we could do to help our schools or schoolchildren. I think it's the way to go. So I support it full argument.
I'm not the motion for a dark revolution.
All right, I have a motion by Councilman Kuzar, and I have a second by Ms. James. Let me call the role, Ms. Anthony.
And Cole Hardley agree.
Desire? Yes. Councilman James?
Yes.
Councilman Gordon? Captain Gordon?
Yes.
Captain Holloway?
Yes.
Captain McGee?
Before I vote, I would just like to, um, commend the Parks and Recreation Department for this great, uh, partnership. I think with the lack of broadband that's, uh, that's available throughout our city, I think this is a great opportunity for us to provide opportunities to, to the kids so they can have a safe space to learn and to, uh, to do their work. So with that being said, I totally agree. And that's a yes for me.
Absolutely. That was passion. Tanya, thank you and whoever all worked on this. Uh, we appreciate y'all's work on this. I think it's a good thing that we can work with.
Mayor, if I can just for one minute, one more second, I'd like to recognize our center supervisors and also Ryan Jones. Uh, they led the charge on this and working with the school system. Uh, they were very eager to provide this opportunity. And we really, really appreciate all of their efforts and this. And I want to recognize them today because this was their program that they came up with. I can't take a lot of credit. They, they kind of took it and ran with this.
That's awesome.
I think it's great.
That's a great thing.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Out of three open conversations, ladies and committee update. That would be you.
Okay. Well, uh, as you know, we had a Zoom meeting on, uh, conversational racism. We had 49 people, um, on the, on the Zoom or on the call. We've got a lot of positive response. A lot of people said, uh, not enough time. A lot of people, uh, felt that they didn't get the opportunity to speak. But before the discussion part and the Q and A part was announced how many minutes, we had 58 minutes. A lot of people were refraining. I guess nobody wanted to be first. But then after they opened up and people started talking, uh, as I said, some did, um, not have the opportunity. I got a lot of emails, a lot of texts and phone calls, uh, that people were pleased. One, and I guess I can't call names, one, uh, pastor from a large church here says he has committed his church to that. Um, then I heard from some of the, um, directors of these nonprofits. They were eager, um, and I think people walked away with a different understanding because racism is a thing that people look at very differently. And, uh, Dr. Samuel broke it down for us. He explained, um, where it comes from. He explained the four levels of it. Uh, he helped us understand the difference between systemic and institutional. And, um, it's just something that I guess everybody knew was here. Nobody ever really just thought about it until this time and place when the whole country, the whole world is, is actually concentrating on it. And I'm, I'm so happy that we had that opportunity to open the dialogue up because I think it was appropriate that the city take the lead. And I, I think, I think it's a great thing.
And, and so I guess with Jake, Lynn, any counsel got any?
I was, I was able to join the meeting and I thoroughly enjoyed it and it was very enlightening. And I, it was happy to see, um, all of the different, um, faces that were on the meeting just to show how much everybody was engaged in that process. Um, just like, uh, Council, Councilwoman Anthony says, it's definitely a conversation that needs to be had. Not necessarily a comfortable conversation, but it's a conversation that we, we need to be comfortable with having, um, as leadership in our city that is dealing with so much here, um, locally and, and nationally. So, um, I think we need to try to have another one or I don't know if it's an option to, to, to keep the committee as an ongoing committee. Um, so we continue these conversations to make sure that the city is getting better and better every day regarding racism and equity and equality. Um, you know, Dr. Samuel was, was brilliant in his presentation, but just like, uh, Councilwoman Anthony said, there just wasn't enough time. Um, so we definitely want to give opportunity for people to, to have an opportunity to speak and share their experiences um, as regards to racism, um, systemic racism and institutional racism, um, as relates to the city of Monroe.
And you know, the way it was presented, I don't think it was uncomfortable as people thought it was going to be. Nobody was blamed or anything, no guilt. It was simply explained. It, it helped me a lot to explain things. People probably don't understand Tuesday, they may, may not have.
People get more, as you go, people get more comfortable with it. And they get, get a better feeling, you know, stuff like that. Anyone else got anything?
Yeah, I think, I think-
Mayor Pro Tim Holloway would like to add something if I could. Uh, and Saluda, thank you for sending me that copy. I was not able to, uh, listen to it live, but I did watch the entire video and Dr. Samuel was very informative. Majeeb, he's a Duke graduate. You probably knew that. Uh, I would say one thing, and I, and I think Saluda, you and Franco both touched on it. Uh, more involvement by the panel, I think would be because they're the, they reflect our local, uh, thoughts in our local community. And maybe a little less from, uh, the facilitator or whoever. He did a great job, but I'd rather hear more local input, I think, thoughts, ideas. Some people on there I didn't know, uh, make some very good points. So, uh, very well done for the first meeting, I thought.
I think it was important that he laid the foundation down as he did initially, uh, which is also, which opens up for more conversation. I think it's important that people understand and hear the presentation first. And then now come back and have, have takeaways to bring back to the meeting, uh, moving forward. That's why I was suggesting that this conversation continues because it was so much more things that we can unpack, um, through that conversation. So that's, that's my recommendation. I do have a question for Bruce or Pete. Do you guys know how many people have viewed that YouTube since, um, since that meeting? Do you have those numbers?
If I, Mayor, if I could ask, if anyone's speaking, please identify yourself before, once you start. Thank you.
If you give me a, this is Pete Havannic, I'll, I'll check on it and give it to you before you get off.
Thank you.
Okay. This is Councilwoman James. I just, I think we should have them monthly or need more conversations on, um, racism, different things going on in community. Community needs to be involved in what's going on. So, um, great first start. Looking forward to many more.
And I think his intent was to have understanding out there first. And now it's, it's time for discussion. Now the people really got to grab something.
Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, Freddie Gordon here. Uh, I did, uh, appreciate and enjoy the conversation on racism. Uh, and I, I just wanted to add that I think that if we go forward with this, uh, we should try to broaden our base of participants. Uh, you know, it shouldn't be just a city council initiative, I don't think. I, I would like to even suggest that we could spread it out to, to other, uh, parts of our community. Uh, Union County Government, uh, Dr. Samuel mentioned that on numerous occasions, that this was not only, um, he was, he was trying to discuss it with the Monroe and Union County perspective. Uh, our commissioners, maybe our Chamber of Commerce, the NAACP. I, I say we need to spread it out and make it a broader discussion. And, um, a, a, as we go forward, uh, uh, I, uh, I think that's, that's one way of hopefully accomplishing something from it. Regardless of how many meetings we have or, or, or how long that it goes on, uh, I would like to suggest that.
Yeah. I agree, uh, Mayor Kilmore, I agree with what you said, Freddie. I think it needs to be, uh, more focused and, uh, and more people come in. Uh, a lot of times folks say more the better. I don't know if that's always true, but, uh, certainly we've got some folks out there, I think, that really enhance this particular thing. I don't think it needs to be just a city entity, not just a city. It needs to be a broad, more broad thing.
A lot of people did want to be on it, that, you know, couldn't.
I think at some point, maybe, uh, Mr. Gordon and, uh, and whoever, the chair here and whoever, to sit down and kind of get this focus and figure out it's where, just exactly where you want to go. And, and it, and like I said, that'd be a, I don't know if I'm saying this right, a, a community entity or whatever. It don't need just to be a city. It needs, as you said, bring it, bring it to motherfuckers. I agree with that a hundred percent. I don't know about the rest of the council, but that's where I'm at on it.
Councilmember McGee, do we need, do we need a motion to, uh, to make this a monthly meeting and to broaden the, broaden the, uh, the focus to more of a county wide event or, um, or how do we need to move forward with this?
Yes, you would. Count, this is Majeeb Shakan, Councilmember McGee, you would. Staff would also ask that, I, I know you hit two items, which is to expand the participation and also whether or not to make it monthly. Um, as noted in the staff report, there are of course other issues in terms of what you wish to do. And perhaps what you could do is ask the committee to deal with those issues because one of the things that's pointed out in the staff report is you have to determine what the objectives then are, how you would accomplish it, if you're going to use a facilitator. So perhaps the suggestion might be the council could provide this input and charge the committee to meet, the, the committee of three to meet again and to make some determinations. But that's entirely up to all of you. You could just go ahead and do the motion that Councilmember McGee suggested, which is asking this to be done monthly and to expand participation. But perhaps that might be something that the committee could chew over as well.
Councilmember McGee, I do like that idea of G, but we can actually go ahead with the motion and then they can bring us back more of an itinerary um, of what they want to take care of at that time, if that's possible.
Uh, I think then, this is Majeeb Shakan again, Councilmember McGee, my suggestion would be your motion would be to refer this matter to the, uh, the committee on conversational racism and ask them to make determinations as to how this should go forward and then report back to council.
So move.
I, I was thinking that. I have a question. When, when would the council want to report back?
What, uh, what kind of timeframe, uh, Mayor Kilmore, what kind of timeframe that, uh, you think it would be adequate, uh, by the term?
I, I would think, um, at least by the next week. I think it's important for continuity that we do it. Uh, not fast, but so we don't lose any of the momentum.
Right. So like with, uh, what, what, a month or so, maybe, uh, you know, because it's already been a week, right? So another three weeks. Right.
Chairman's suggestions, October, uh, open for suggestions. Any comments?
Councilmember McGee, I agree October would be a good timeframe to, to keep the momentum going and to keep the ideas fresh. Because I know there were a lot of people that, that had thoughts and, uh, wanted to, to bring some things back to the table. So, uh, we definitely don't want to, want to lose that, uh, those thoughts and, 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 and that conversation. So, uh, the sooner the better, I think.
Remember, remember to give us your name when you speak. And I forget sometimes myself. I have a councilman McGee. Any other comments? Council, have any other comments? Uh, yes, Pete, I see you have.
Uh, yes, Councilman McGee, this is Pete Havannic. I've, I've got quick stats for you. We had 116 views on YouTube for that video with an average, uh, viewership of 20 minutes. So those people that logged on, logged on for 20 minutes. I'll dive down a little deeper for you and I'll, I'll shoot you some of the stats from that, uh, for the future.
Councilmember McGee, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Um, this is Majeeb Shakan. Councilmember McGee, if you would be so kind as to amend your motion to request that the committee report back to council at the October 6th meeting. Um, I believe that would meet the purposes I think the chair has in mind as well.
Okay.
Okay, so move.
I'm sorry.
And does the second or agree, Councilmember Anthony?
Yes, uh, Councilmember Anthony, I, I accepted that motion.
Okay. Who made the motion?
Councilmember McGee made the motion. Councilmember Anthony seconded it, Mayor.
He made the motion. I have a second by Captain Anthony. Uh, all in favor, uh, Captain Anthony?
Yes.
Captain Desire?
Yes.
Captain James?
Yes.
Captain Gordon?
Yes.
Captain Holloway?
Yes.
Captain McGee?
Yes.
Well, that will pass. So we'll come back on October 6th, I believe. Are there anything else that we need to bring up? That, uh, the agenda for the four o'clock meeting, are there anything else? If not, we'll continue, we'll continue this meeting until six o'clock. Okay, we're adjourned at six o'clock.